That cap is where it starts getting into astronomical valued houses. That's, that's what I'm talking about. The community benefit requirements, rental units must stay affordable. So owner occupied homes must remain occupied. And a local hiring bonus. If the contractor is Crawford County based or Bucyrus based, and that might be a hard sell. And there might be some, there might be some concerns on legal incentive on that. I'm not sure what all pertains to that. That's something that I'll ask the law director to look into. But just trying to promote not bringing out outside contractors to actually employ people who live in Bucyrus and Crawford County. The fiscal impact, like I said, there would be no short-term dip in tax revenue, which is especially important for schools. That's the biggest part that I think is the biggest hurdle that we have to get over when we talk tax abatements because people see it as a blanket. They see it as a no-no word. They see it as a thing that we shouldn't do because it takes, we're already in a fiscally, try to think of a good word here, challenging time. It wouldn't make sense for us to, if we're barely paying the bills, to cut back on our ta- our, uh, tax growth. Long-term growth here, guys, like the biggest thing is that we don't have a long-term plan. I feel like I, when I ran for the upcoming election, I had said like, we always are focused on the two-year cycle, the four-year cycle. The mayor's focused on what can I do in my four years so I can get reelected. Council's focusing on what, what projects we can do for two years that can, you know, move us forward and make us look good. And I'm not saying that's all the time, but that's back in your mind. I know it is because I sit over here now. But the biggest thing is, and the biggest reason I've got involved is because I want my kids to stay here. I want to see my grandkids stay here. I'd like to see my family flourish here and have opportunities not for it to keep dwindling down to this aging population. So renovations raise the overall value of neighborhoods. That's a big thing. If someone utilizes this program, it boosts everybody's property value. The resale value goes up. The neighborhood is more palatable to people moving in. That's where the non-participating homes gain value too. So if someone doesn't choose to participate in this program, they still get a benefit because their value of their house is going to go up. After the abatements expire, and some of them are short-term, the city collects more revenue than if nothing's been done. It's not about just getting a business here. If they're looking at the people and the support and what our residents look like, if there's people leaving, if they're coming and going, being able to support growth, that's what we need. We need something that addresses our current homes, making new homes, and getting people to invest long-term in Bucyrus. So invest, investment, neighborhood uplift, neighborhood uplift and shared prosperity. So this is not a subsidy. It's an investment. It's about uplifting entire neighborhoods, not just in, in single homes. And it's about shared prosperity. Homeowners are going to build equity. Neighborhoods would improve and the city gains revenue in the long run. So the next steps for a program like this, we would have to engage with our school and county officials since they're key partners. Brief them on this. Have those discussions where the issues of declining revenue is addressed. That was the, my, my first and foremost thing in discussing tax abatements that I was worried about. I don't want us to lose revenue in the short-term because we frankly can't afford it. Draft a formal ordinance under the CRA authority. They have a memo on how to go about doing this. And it does not have to be full, full abatements. It's pretty flexible. Like I said, their terms are basically a blanket up to 15 years and 100% abatement. That's not what we're looking for here, though. We're trying to keep us secured where we are, but look forward. And designating revitalization zones in partnership with the community. I think it'd be valuable to have some sort of separate discussion or even an ad hoc just for this purpose because I think this also very much ties into zoning and the expertise of plating and zoning. So I think if we do this right, we can stabilize where we are now, but we can grow. We all know everything's getting more expensive. People don't want to invest in their property because they don't want to see their taxes go up and people are just skating by as it is. So I hope to see many generations of Bucyrians come and hope to see people see what I see in our community. So that's my idea. I'm open to any thoughts. I'll go sit back over there and I guess I'll open it to public participation as well. And if you did not get it, there is a handout that I made and I will get, make sure this gets posted on documents on demand for this meeting as well as I will share it as a link so you can view it.
Clarissa, question?
Let me go say it.
Okay.
Yes, Vicky?
So what we're looking at here is to do the CRA for residential housing.
Correct.
Now, I know when I was the enterprise zone manager and the CRA housing officer for the city, when we started our, when we established a CRA, there was talk of doing both commercial and residential.
Correct.
And at that time, the county auditor felt that we should not look at the residential. So we just did commercial.
Correct.
Now, I know when I retired in 2016, that's all the CRA was, was just for commercial. Have you checked to see, has there been anything done for CRA for residential?
There is not.
Okay.
There is, there, the partnership is, I believe, working on something for the industrial side. But the partnership has also released numerous documents about how we aren't palatable to new industry because we don't have the ability to house individuals. And if we do, they're not palatable properties.
Okay.
So I don't know what we need to do. We need to establish, you know, a separate one just for residential. I'm not sure how that all works. I have more research to do.
Okay.
I wanted to at least share what I prepared so far so we can start somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Frank?
Kurt Frankhouser, 1415 Michigan Drive. This kind of was brought up when, I don't know if it was Gary Frankhouser was still at the partnership or his successor. But he had brought up, one of the directors of the partnership brought this up and they said the real benefit to a tax abatement for residential is going to be on the new builds. That's where it's going to be the most impactful. And they were looking at like the arrowhead out there. You know, there's some lots, there's the land that the Lutz son bought. And, you know, you build a $400,000 house, you're going to have significant property tax on that. But if you can get an abatement, and, and there was something with the school had to agree to it too.
Correct. That's right. I said we have to talk to them as well.
So there is a possibility with this program of spurring residential new home builds.
Right.
Or having an incentive.
That is, to answer your question, that's why it's all-inclusive. It's not just certain neighborhoods or certain zones, but also providing something for all residents to be able to invest in without compromising.
The existing remodels though, I kind of don't think it's going to advantage them that much. And one of the reasons why, so this program really is based off of what the tax millage is for property taxes on a property. And as far as bringing revenue into the city off of millage, we, we have very little millage on our property tax for, as far as the city's portion. Most, the vast majority of the millage on somebody's property tax goes to the schools, goes to the county. I mean, if I am correct, I think the city collects in total off of the assessed millage, like 100-ish thousand dollars or something like that. Or it's not much. Like it's less than a quarter million. So as far as that, that bringing in significant revenue for the city, until you have a millage on the books that is significant, it's not going to bring in significant revenues.
Well, I feel like that's something.
The advantage with the new home build situation is you're getting somebody to build a new home that's going to have another utility account. You're going to have people potentially living in that home that are working in the city or commuting. But then, you know, depending on where they're working, we're going to get income tax revenue based off that. So that's where your main advantages are going to be on the new builds.
I don't disagree what you're saying with that the revenue that comes into the city, new builds are going to be where it's at. I don't disagree with you. However, where I will disagree with you is that I've talked to Greg Timberlake. He talks about bringing people who are possible commercial investors through the town. If we've got properties that they go to and they see dilapidated, poorly ma- maintenance properties, which property maintenance can help with, however, if they see and if they do a thorough job investigating our, our city, they're also going to be worried about the type of people they could attract to come here. And this is also about on a micro, like a microcosm, people finding it easier instead of investing in their current property to move somewhere else out of Bucyrs. It's giving individuals an incentive to stay. It's about a multifaceted approach. It's about approaching it by certain areas, certain zoning areas, certain communities and new builds, especially when we have vacant and dilapidated properties that aren't providing anything to us.
Yeah, when, when I discussed it with, and I don't remember exactly who, they, they were concentrating on the new builds. I have not discussed it with Mr. Timberlake. So maybe he knows something I don't.
New builds are great, but again, if we don't have anything for the people staying here or, you know, people who want to have their own home, who are willing to invest in a property, I mean, I'm going to use Galleon for example. The houses that they have in Galleon, if you go down the main corridor, they're older houses, they're beautiful. I'm thinking of the house in the corner of, by Earhart's, that old Queen Victorian, uh, Queen Anne. We don't have a lot of properties like that because the investment amount and then the astronomical raise in their taxes is why a lot of people don't renovate those types of properties. So what I'm saying is I agree with you as in bringing in revenue for the city. I'm also talking about an emotional buy-in from our citizens. That's where we're struggling with. And it's not just with confrontation up here. It's about what they see when they go to buy a house.
There's a lot of remodeling that happens interior-wise that never gets reported to the county tax.
I agree.
So that's not going to affect any of this. It's going to be like a major exterior type of remodel, which.
In my slide, that's what I stated. It's about the major exterior or, you know, structural improvement.
World Furnace Foundation.
And the, the thing with the roofs, because I did see the email you sent out, like they told me at the tax office once that we tax your, your roof as if it's good all the time because we assume if you have a house, it's always got a good roof on it. So that putting a roof on ain't going to qualify.
Well, I'm thinking, Mr. Frankhouser, and I'm just saying this respectfully, I hope whatever background, uh, interaction that we've had isn't affecting how you feel about this because it's really not just about, I mean, it is, it is about new development. That is a huge thing.
I, I was in favor of it back when it was brought up for the new development side and then it kind of lost traction with the partnership.
Also about when new families are looking to come here, if they're, if all we have to offer is 100-year-old buildings with crappy roofs and no HVAC and crumbling foundations, why would they want to move here? Why would they want to buy a $30,000 house that they had to put $100,000 into and then turn around and have to pay astronomically higher taxes? The whole point is the incentive to invest here, whether it be on a larger residential scale, but also focusing on the individual families.
I'd say let's get moving on the program. Let's get it going.
All right. Thank you.
Clarissa, you talk about dilapidated houses and things. I would like to see how many of these dilapidated houses are rentals and belong to LLC companies that are owned by people that live out of town? They let these places cave in? They write them off, you never see them again, and then Bucyrs gets stuck demolishing these houses. That's the majority of your dilapidated houses that you're talking about. And for someone to make improvements to their house, they have to have a job. They got to pay for these improvements. I think we need to concentrate more on the quality industry again. Someone's not going to move to Bucyrs if there's no work here. That's just flat out, that's a fact. I like the idea. I love this idea, but until we get a, a hold of these rental companies and these rental properties, you're going to continue to see these dilapidated houses that end up being empty lots. They're, they're all over the place.
I haven't been able to meet with the partnership as much as I'd like to, but in our initial meeting when we spoke, the biggest thing, their biggest hurdle that they're having is that when they do pull information on Bucyrs, what they're getting is that we can't handle the residential increase. People are leaving.
Do they ask why people are leaving?
Do they ask why people are leaving?
Ask why they're, they're leaving.
Because there's no industry. But the thing is, what I'm saying is that the people who are coming in and basically interviewing us, I mean, they go through the partnership, they go and see like out of the industrial park or GE or whatever properties we may have that they're interested in. The biggest hurdle that we're hitting is when they do their own research, they're saying, well, the people, the people that we are trying to attract, you don't have anything to keep them here because you don't have the ability to house them.
Right.
So it's a, it's, I agree, but I think unless we do it in tandem together and focus on both.
Get the industry here and people will flock to the industry. But like I said, until we get a hold of these, these rental properties, it's just going to continue.
Right. And that's like property maintenance as well. So, I mean, that's, that falls into the property maintenance thing we're also working on. It's just, we're all trying to like make it black and white or simple and one thing fixes all. But Greg Timberlake, I said, historically, the biggest problem they're having is that we have people come here and they like the site and then they turn around and say, well, we don't like your residential situation, we're not coming.
So they drive down these streets and they see these rental properties.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. And like I said, some of them live out of town, they disappear and they, the same thing we have issue with 42080's Mansfield. I mean.
I've got half a dozen in my neighborhood right now. They've been emptied for 10, 15 years.
Yeah. I don't disagree, I mean, I'm not disagreeing.
The owner lives right outside of town.
Right.
I'm not going to mention any names, but.
No, I don't disagree, but a lot of times they think the same thing, why the heck would I? And I'm, I'm not saying it's the right thing because I hope that everyone has the same opinion about Bucyrs about wanting to invest in it, but they're probably looking monetarily. Some people might buy properties and then turn around and they fall ill or their, their financial situation changes.
I'm saying the majority, 90% of these dilapidated properties are rentals. I guarantee it.
Yeah.
And I would like to see, I'm not sure where I would get those records at. I don't know if.
If you have a list, I'll help you find the answer.
I mean, doesn't there have to be a list with the, maybe Kaylee?
If you have certain properties you're concerned about.
Property is more than county.
County, yeah.
I didn't know if it.
If you go on the county auditor's website, you can look up the properties. If you don't know the name.
Yeah, I've done that, but I mean.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a list just rentals here and homeowners here.
Right.
And compare.
She might have, might have that information, but I just mean like if you have specific properties that you're worried about.
I do it all the time.
Yeah.
Oh, Vicky? But I still, I, I'll go to my grave saying until we get quality industry here, quality jobs here, I think we're, we're getting.
It's, it's such circular reasoning though. I mean, when it comes down to it, that I agree with you, that unless we get industry here, why are people going to want to stay here? But if we can't get our citizens to invest in Bucyrs or have other people invest in their, you know.
But I think we need to look at the whole rental thing.
Right. But what ends up happening is, I agree, we should invest in commercial properties. We invest in commercial properties and say, well, your residential situation sucks, so we're not coming here. And then we end up in this downward spiral. So what my hope is, is that a program like this can.
I said, I love the program, but we have these people buying these cheap houses for $20,000 and doing nothing to them and renting them out all the time.
Right.
And that's making the city look like crap.
Right. And that's where, you know, property ma- you're, you're on property maintenance too, right?
I am.
Yeah. So hopefully.
I said, I love the idea.
Fingers crossed.
I like the job idea better.
We're collectively.
Kaylee Lewis, 422 Wallace Avenue. Just because property taxes mentioned, I wanted to give you a static figure. This is just the first half of property taxes for 2025. The city brought in $379,078.71. That was all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jimmy, City Council, as far as plating, we'll back you 100%. You need us in meetings or whatever, do research, let us know.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to switch it over to public participation because I can, anyone on the council before we go to part, uh, public participation?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
I think the 25,000 is too low. I think it should be 50. It doesn't take much for a 25,000 to fix up a, a house, so.
Yeah.
That's almost a pothole anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that someone did a complete internal resi- or renovation and they recorded 36. So, and it just, I, like I said, that was just a number. That's something we obviously can discuss.
It can be worked with.
Right.
The whole plan sounds very good.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any more public participation about anything economic development? Seeing none? Oh, during at 8:19.
The Finance Committee to order at 8:20 PM. Numbers present are James Mee, Christopher Maritz, Vicky Deschawn, and myself, Chair. Public participation.
Thank you.
Kurt Frankhouser, 1415 Michigan Drive. Now, I handed out a packet. I did let Kaylee look at it, although it was short notice. I was trying to confirm if there were any inaccuracies on these numbers. Page two is transcript of when she was describing the Rita. I forget which meeting it was, but I've, I've, I've dove into the numbers. I've dove into the numbers with this Rita thing and, and, and I will give Kaylee credit. She's right. The tax office for this year has brought in more money even so far in July than what their expenditures or what their budget is. So Kaylee's right. Now, when you look into the, that collected money, which is after page two here, the charts, that collected 486,000. It's not just collection of 2025 or, or one particular year. If you look at each of these deposits, some of this is, it ranges from anywhere from 2018 to 2020, 2023. So, you know, a, a collection that they assessed, it could be somebody's back taxes from the year 2018. It could be the back taxes from the year 2022. It could be multiples of years and it shows which years it is. A lot of them is 2023 though, so there is some consistency with that. But the assumption that we're going to be collecting 400-plus thousand dollars every single year in back taxes, I don't think we can bet the farm on that. I think we have gotten aggressive here lately with going after taxes that had accumulated over multiple years and that's why we're seeing the high collection right now. But once that, once the tax office gets caught up, are they going to be self-funding anymore? I don't know. I truly don't know. That's something that I think the committee should keep an eye on. The other variable factor in this, I don't know what Rita would charge because I did talk to the Crestline Mayor. They pay Rita extra money for them to go after people's back taxes. So the 80,001, 81,146 that Kaylee had said that the Rita cost us would be, I don't, I don't know if that includes them going after any back taxes. She's shaking her head no, so.
Did they tell you how they know who to go after or what to go after? Does somebody from the village of Crestline have to prepare that to give to Rita? So are we doing?
I, I don't know a lot about the tax office. It's, it's, it's kind of like a, kind of.
I'm just curious, I mean.
To me, the tax office kind of operates like the IRS. You really don't know what's going on. I mean, it's not public records. A lot of the things they do aren't public record in there. You can't get a copy of somebody's tax return and stuff. So, but I did, I did have somebody that's very knowledgeable in tax stuff. They did point out to me that in order for the city to gen- like, like this 480-some-thousand-dollar collected tax that we got in this year, you know, if, if you, some, but there had to be income shown somewhere to tax at the 2.25%. And for that 480,000, I mean, there had to be $20 million worth of income somewhere And for that four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I mean, there had to be twenty million dollars worth of income somewhere that, you know, collectively all these people had. Because then there, you multiply that by the point oh two, oh two-two-five. Now, you could get into variables with some of these people working in other municipalities, so did somebody get a credit? You know, or they get paying the whole point two-two-five of their, you know, that's kind of debatable, but the, the thing, the major thing that I kind of am seeing here, so. Let's say that the tax office operating budget is three hundred and eighty thousand every year, okay? They would have to find. You can calculate out how much unreported and untaxed revenue it would take that they would have to find somewhere to get to that number. You're, you're well over ten million dollars at that point. So, you know, is there that much money every year that, that people aren't reporting on their taxes that the tax office is able to find? Is there ten-plus million dollars worth of income getting funneled some way through people either living here or working here and not paying taxes? That you would then multiply the point oh-two-two-five number to get that? I don't think there's over ten million dollars floating through town here, you know, there's.
But to your point, most of this, you said, was twenty twenty-three?
Well, if you, if you look, yeah, 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 if you look on this page here.
Most of it will be twenty twenty-four, and we're going to keep.
It, it could be, that could be, that could be, and I, I don't know how far back they're going on assessments. You know, did they start in the most recent years and they're working their way back? I don't know. I don't know how they're operating. You know, and the farther you go back, you know, they start getting into the early two thousand teens. People were making way less money in them years anyway, so like these collection rates are potentially going to be going down. So, that was just a little, little food for thought there. You know, I'm, I'm supporting keeping a tax office for now, um, as is, just because, like Kaylee said, they are bringing in more money than what it costs to operate. But we should be mindful and keep an eye on that. Now, the other page, very last page. This I got off of Rita. So you can go to Rita's website and print off all seven hundred plus jurisdictions that they are collecting tax for in a CSV format, which is an Excel file type. And then you can sort it and you can, uh, you know.
Is that the file you emailed to us earlier today?
I did not email you the CSV file, so when, when, when you download that, it gives you the option to just like save it as an Adobe or save it as a CSV. I saved it as the Adobe and sent it. You can go back on their website and pull the CSV if you want, and then I re-sorted it with jurisdictions based on jurisdictions having the higher tax rate. Which appears to be, the highest one is three percent. So there's only like maybe forty-ish on this page. I only printed the first page out. I wanted to show you the most highest tax rated districts that Rita is processing tax returns for right now. And, you know, the first thirty or so. Well, the very, the very lowest one on this page is two point two five, which is where we are yet today, right here in Bucyrus, Ohio. We are two point two five percent tax rate. So, at our current tax rate of two point two five percent, we're actually some of the highest taxed in the state according to Rita's, uh, own list of everybody. Okay, and then, and then this, the next number over from the, the tax rate, the credit factor, that shows you, does that town give a hundred percent tax credit for the people that live in that town and work at another town or, or not? Most of them are given a hundred percent tax credit. So, uh, basically, what I'm trying to point out on this page, Bucyrus, Ohio is one of the highest, we are in the top taxed income tax rates now. If, if we go up higher than the two point two five, we're got, that's going to put us up towards the middle of this page where we could very, uh. Easily end up in the top twenty in the state for tax districts that's on the Rita website. So, I don't think that's good. I think we need to be kind of, let's kind of keep this tax rate down, but yet, you know, we're faced with budget deficit. We're faced with budget deficit, so, you know. You know, it's, it's not looking good, and I've, I've, you know. We all need to work together to try to save money is basically what I'm saying here. And, and I, I give Kaylee cred-, she's been very responsive this week, getting me some public record requests, and, you know, sometime, some of it she might have had to drop what she was doing to get, but then, but, you know. Right now, let's keep the tax office kind of what it is. I support that, and, you know, let's, I'd like to see tax deductions. Like, I'd like to see our rate decrease so we're not in the top thirty-five taxed districts in the state of Ohio. But that's, I mean, I think we're far, far from being able to lower the tax rate right now, but, thank you.
I would just like to add really quickly that, um, because only the two point fives printed, or the higher ones that you did, which is understandable, I get that. A lot of the places that have lower tax rates that are like a one percent or something like that, they give a, they don't give a hundred percent credit, or they'll give like a very reduced credit. That way they're kind of like doubling their income that way, if that makes sense.
The only reason I brought it up was because we're, you know, we're potentially, we've got a levy on November, and we're not giving a one hundred percent credit currently with the way things are. So, we're already on the, we look like, kind of like the big bad city here, kind of, by not giving a one hundred percent credit and still being towards the higher end of this chart. This chart, if I would have printed off every page and not just the top one, it was like eleven pages long, I didn't want to waste the ink, but.
Well, I believe that we decided to cap the credit at the, for the out-of-town workers at two percent. That way it was more fair supposedly that the in-town and out-of-town workers both were carrying the burden of the safety forces levy.
Yeah, so that, there's an actual piece of legislation for that, and it doesn't actually use the number two percent. What it does is it's based off of a percentage of the whole two point two five as a whole.
Yes, it's eighty-eight point eight nine.
And so if the levy in November passes, you might have to change that legislation to reflect.
Yes.
If you still want to be in that area where you said, so.
Any other public participation? All right, open projects. Um, I apologize that the auditor had previously referred transfers, and when the council president messaged me yesterday to ask what I wanted on the agenda, I wasn't aware that she wanted to bring this back up today, so that's why it's not on the agenda. So I'll turn it over to you.
Um, this is a transfer for the purpose of continuing utility billing service contracts from seven oh one Water Works Lands and Buildings Program, seven five two six. Water Works Lands and Buildings and item twenty-three contractual services, taking away five thousand dollars from there and transferring it to increase. Seven oh one Water Works, seven five two zero Water Works Administration, item number twenty-three contractual services, and putting the five thousand there.
So I will entertain a motion requesting, oh, sorry.
Um, Kaylee?
Sorry.
Yeah. Excuse me. If I remember correctly, when you spoke at another council meeting about the transfers.
Mm-hmm.
And you'll know this quicker than me trying to look it up, but what is the proper title of seven oh one? Is it Water Works?
It is Water Works, that's why the W W is there. In the shortened version, like if you look under program two five two six, it's W W, it's actually Water Works.
Okay, but transferring from seven oh one Water Works Lands and Funds.
You're right, you're right.
So which is the correct?
So that one should be Water Works.
Just Water Works.
So we remove lands and buildings.
Yes, I'll make sure that's corrected on the legislation.
Thank you.
Any others?
No, no.
Now, I will entertain a motion requesting emergency legislation for this transfer.
Uh, so, okay.
But at the motion, Mr. Maritz?
Sir.
A second by Mr. Me, any discussion? If not, Mr. Maritz?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschawn?
Yes.
And also, yes, motion passes. And I'm assuming you want to address this now?
Sure.
Are you going to do that under open projects?
That's what I was thinking under project.
Okay, then I'll do, I'll be talking after you're, you're talking.
Okay. Are we officially calling this open projects and to do it now? Sorry, just double checking.
That's fine, it's, I guess you were kind of giving a report, or we can wait, it's up to you.
I can do it, it's fine. Um, this is the city of Bucyrus fiscal update. This is as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, because that was the last month-end cutoff. So as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, the city of Bucyrus has ten million five hundred fifty-five thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents throughout all the funds. There's currently four million five hundred thirty-four dollar, sorry, four million five hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-seven cents encumbered on purchase orders. General overview of each fund. In the general fund, the revenues year-to-date are three million five hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-two cents. That's at sixty-six percent of projected revenue for the year, and where we should be right now, we are at a hundred and thirteen point seven percent of where we should be in July. Expenditures were three million fourteen hun-, fourteen thousand, fourteen dollars and one cent. Um, the percentage of actual full-year budget utilized is fifty-six point nine five percent. The projected expenses for July of twenty twenty-five would have been about fifty-eight point three three, since we're, you know, seven twelfths through the year. The increase of revenue from the general fund in taxes, the, is due from, you know, the increase in what we brought in in taxes. The budget, we are under one point three seven percent in expenses. For the income tax fund, our revenues year-to-date are five million five hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and eleven cents. Where that puts us throughout the year is at seventy-nine point four nine percent, and for where we're expected to be for year-to-date in July, we're at one hundred eighteen point six eight percent. Our expenditures for that department, um, for the operational cost of that department are one hundred sixty-eight thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Transfers, and this is, if you look at that fund, where it gets confusing, because the expenses for that fund look like they're a lot more than they actually are, but that's because a huge chunk of that is over three million, is transfers from the income tax fund to the general fund. It has to go into the income tax fund first and then be transferred to the general fund. Percentage actual of full-year budget utilized is fifty-two point nine six percent. Projected expenses for July twenty twenty-five, fifty-eight point three three percent. The budget is under five point three seven percent in expenses, projected to bring in two million one hundred forty-three thousand five hundred three dollars and thirty-six cents at this point in the year. The actual revenue year-to-date is two million five hundred forty-three thousand eight fifty-nine eleven. That's a difference of four hundred thousand thirty hundred fifty-five dollars, seventy-five cents. Meaning the three hundred thousand is no longer an issue for the twen-, deficit, is no longer an issue for the twenty twenty-five year. For the safety forces fund, um, revenues year-to-date, three million six hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred ten dollars and fifty-one cents. The percentage for revenue where we should be at this year is sixty-one point zero six percent, and at July, where we're projected to be, we're over that, we're at one hundred four point six eight percent. Expenses for the safety forces fund year-to-date, three million seven hundred two thousand five hundred six dollars and three cents. Percentage of actual full-year budget utilized, fifty-seven point three nine percent. Projected expenses for July twenty twenty-five, that would put us at fifty-eight point three three percent. So, in the safety forces fund, we are budgeting under point nine four percent in expenses. Remember, the safety forces fund is supplemented by the general fund. Safety forces fund has a twenty twenty-four cash carryover of five hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Also, keep in mind that due to the insurance runout from twenty twenty-four, there was an expense of one hundred five thousand three hundred fifty dollars and twenty twenty, and twenty-two cents, which affects all funds that include the personal services categories, causing a front-loading of expenses. Street fund, the year-to-date revenues are one million seven hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. The percentage for the revenue for the year is sixty-eight point nine four percent. Where we should be for July year-to-date, we are over where our revenue should be, one hundred eighteen point one nine percent. Expenses for the street fund, we are at one million two hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Percentage actual of full-year budget utilized, forty-one point seven three percent. Projected expenses, where we would typically be, once again, that seven twelfths is fifty-eight point three three. So, budget under, we're under sixteen point six percent in expenses. Remember, the street fund had a twenty twenty-four cash carryover of one million one hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred seventy-six thousand thirty-four cents. Also, keep in mind that the project expensed in this fund are more weather-dependent with the slowdown happening in the cooler months. We have also at this point still expensed less than we have revenue to end for twenty twenty-five. Water fund, revenues year-to-date, we have brought in three million nine hundred thirty thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Revenue for the year is seventy-one point nine percent. Um, where we are projected for July, we're coming in above at one hundred and three point four percent. Expenses year-to-date are two million eight hundred sixty-one thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Percentage actual full-year budget utilized, forty-nine point six three percent. Projected expenses for July of twenty twenty-five, fifty-eight point three three. We are budgeting under eight point seven percent in expenses. Cash on hand in the Water Works Fund is positive at five thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. As we have made the first half of the loan payments for the OWDA for twenty twenty-five, which totaled eight hundred eighty-three thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars and six cents. Revenues will continue to build as twenty twenty-five continues. The second half of the loan payments will be just due in December of twenty five, twenty twenty-five, where a similar dip will occur. Remember, we should also see a return of three hundred thousand from the two-seventy fund for the county water line projects, as well as the conclusion of the O D O D reimbursement tap grant at the end of twenty twenty-five. Also note, if you were to subtract the one million fifty thousand the city received via the Water System Improvement Bond, Series twenty twenty-five, that would put the revenue for the Water Works Fund at two million eight hundred eighty thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. This shows that the city has been mindful and remaining within our revenues brought in by typical water fund functioning. We also have two hundred six thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-three cents cash in the Water Works Sister Fund, seven oh five, the Water Works Replacement Fund, if a water line emergency were to arise. The sewer fund, revenues year-to-date are one million seven hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. Revenue for the year is at sixty-three point two seven percent. For where we're projected to be at July, we are over a hundred percent at one hundred eight point four seven percent. Expenditures from the sewer fund are one million three hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. The percentage actual for full-year budget utilized, we're only at thirty-eight point three six percent. Projected expenses for July of twenty twenty-five would be about seven twelfths, fifty-eight point three three. So we are budgeting in at under nineteen ninety-seven in expenses in the sewer fund. In the solid waste fund, revenues, we have brought in five hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. That is at sixty point zero three revenue for the year, and for where we're, we're projected to be in July, we are at one hundred and two point nine percent. Expenditures in this fund are six hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. The percentage actual of the full-year budget utilized is fifty-four point three six percent. Projected expenses for July twenty twenty-five are fifty-eight point three three percent. We are under budget currently, three point nine seven percent in expenses. This is a fund where the expenses are outpacing the revenues. This is the most minor Bucyrus's major funds, but we are currently sitting on a cash balance of two-hundred-fifteen-thousand-sixty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents within the Solid Waste Fund. We also have two-hundred-seventy-three-thousand-one-hundred-sixty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents in cash in the Solid Waste Sister Fund, seven-five-five Solid Waste Replacement Fund. The Stormwater Fund is our final major fund. Revenues year-to-date in there is six-hundred-eighty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-sixty-three dollars and three cents, putting us at sixty-point-six-zero-six revenue for the year. And for this point in time in July, we are over our revenues at one-hundred-two-point-nine-six. Our expenditures in the Stormwater Fund for 2025 so far are eight-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-forty dollars and ninety-two cents. The percentage actual full-year budget utilized is at twenty-nine-point-six-one percent. Projected expenses for July 2025 are, that's seven-twelves, fifty-eight-point-three-three percent. So, currently, we're budgeted in under twenty-eight-point-seven-two percent in expenses. Expenditures are outpacing revenues in this fund, but that is due to the large project, the Phase Two of the Northwest Storm Sewer, costing five-hundred-fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and forty cents so far in 2025. This project was possible to undertake because the fund had a 2024 cash carryover of two-million-six-hundred-twenty-three dollars, sorry, two-million-six-hundred-twenty-three-thousand-four-hundred-sixty-five dollars and forty-six cents, meaning that we're still sitting on a positive cash balance in the Stormwater Fund of two-million-four-hundred-forty-two-thousand-three-hundred-eighty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Thank you. Any questions of the auditor? All right.
I do want to say, too, that all this information is within the detailed trial balance.
Correct. I was just thinking, as you're reading through that, it would be neat that you could tell the computer to put it into this format.
I wondered if I could feed it in, like, if I could just feed.
Read article.
Yes, I was like, if I could just feed an entire detailed trial balance into AI, I'd be like, populate me a report.
Well, the candy again? Have you tried?
I'm not willing to pay for that.
Thank you, though, I appreciate that. All right, open projects. Vicki, I'll start with you.
Just a few that I believe that we can remove. The Broadworths Festival Safety Forces and Cleanup Services. Emergency legislation was passed on eight-seven-twenty-five. So, I believe that can be removed.
Any objection?
No.
Okay.
Then there's the Waterworks Fund. That was referred back on February the eighteenth, 2025. And ordinance number fifteen-dash-2025 was passed, and that had to do with the emergency legislation for a bond for the Waterworks Fund. So, I don't think there's any need to leave that on.
Okay, any objection?
No.
All right.
Then, under seven-eight, 2025, we passed emergency legislation on August the fourth, twenty-five, for the forty-two-thousand dollars appropriation, the six-thousand dollars appropriation, the two-thousand-eighty-eight-twenty-eight appropriations, and then the appropriations, advances, and transfers for the airport, airport terminal. Those can all be taken off the open projects.
Yep.
Any objection?
That's it?
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Me? Mr. Muritz?
I'm good.
Other participation?
Where is this later, thirty-six, forty-five, State Route Four? Arguably, I haven't gotten a lot of communication from citizens about much of anything, except for Rita. And I do have, I know friends who personally have been affected by Rita. I feel like it should be like a opening for like a, like a joint civil lawsuit. Have you been affected by Rita? Yes, I know plenty of people who have. A lot of times, people are misidentified. People are getting notices that they've lived in cities they've never lived in. When you call them, it's very hard to get an actual person. You go through the phone tree. And the biggest thing is, I don't know if people know about Rita. It's a regional governance, so we lose a lot of autonomy about how we collect our income tax, when we collect our income tax. We have to follow their rules and procedures. So, if you're a great aunt, Linda, you know, is dying of cancer and had a hard time getting to filing her taxes, extensions become much harder. It's punishing people who may just be a victim of circumstance. They can call and speak to someone in our local tax department, and they're speaking to a neighbor. They're not speaking to a automated system. That money is going outside of Bucyrus as well. I think, overall, we are all tired of automated systems. And when it's something as annoying as taxes, I find it nice to talk to someone reliably that we will know. We'd have direct oversight. We're not going to be managed by people who don't live here. And we, as a council and the administration, have much more autonomy over the department. If we go with Rita, our hands are, like, tied behind our back, so. That's my input on Rita. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add to that, too, that also Rita is part of that board? So, like, for instance, right now, with the local income tax board of review, if, or an abatement, if a business wants an abatement, if something happens, they reach out directly to the income tax administrator for, if they have issues or need approval, or they can reach out to have a hearing or something like that. It's not that easy with Rita. It's not just reaching out because they're controlled by a board, and there's a lot of automated cogs.
Per Fankhouser, fourteen-fifteen, Michigan Drive. Most significant thing I've seen in this report, the three-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit is no longer an issue for 2025. Because I was worried about that. So, headline story, Mr. Beeman.
Any other public participation?
Seeing none, we will adjourn at eight-fifty-three PM.